Good evening, let's call the meeting to order. Welcome to the City of Marshawn City Council. We're at the City Hall Chambers at 10 West State Street. Today's date is January 28, 2019, and it is 5:30 PM. To call to order, let me give a notice to the public that the Mayor and Council welcome comment from the public during the discussion of any agenda items. You're required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less, nor others may be given the opportunity to speak. I should do those commercials for car ads. All speakers shall speak, although I can't speak that well. All speakers, and let's take a vote. Roll call, please. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the Mayor and City Council, not to any Consulier specifically. It's at my discretion of the Consuls to respond to specific questions and comments, or to have the staff respond during the meeting, for those who are able. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Wehren, here.
Cahill?
Here.
Gowdy's absent. Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Lemer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Thank you. I know the next thing on the agenda is for updates from two different departments, but I'd like a moment of silence for Corey Brown. We've all been searching for, praying for, looking for, and feeling sorry for Corey and now his family.
It is now time for D1, which is Parks and Rec Director Jeff Hubbard. Welcome.
I'll take the -- you can still keep coming up and talk, but Jeff has started with the city. Today is his very first day, and we're happy to have him aboard and get started.
Yeah, thank you. I made it through the first eight hours. Didn't freeze to death. Hoping we cancel work tomorrow. But no? Okay. I'll be here tomorrow, then. Excited, I kind of went through a lot of the old files and stuff, looked at some things, and just excited to get in, you know, dig in and filing out some more things and starting some projects and getting to meet some of the other Directors here in town and other community members and kind of putting my stamp on things and making things happen.
You're a Marshawn boy.
Yep, graduated in '89. So grew up here, went to Iowa State and Arizona State, but now back and happy to be back. I moved in with my parents, so I got my old bedroom back, which is nice. So we'll see how that goes. I think it should be fine.
That's good. You do have three sets of pretty big shoes to follow, really. We've had three really good Park and Rec Directors, and I know that you made the cuts from some other competition that was good, so we're glad to have you back in town and glad to have a P&amp;R Director again here.
I knew Bob when I started in Sioux City. Bob was here, and we met at a lot of conferences and knew him very well from growing up. And Terry Gray was a friend of the family, so I knew a lot of things that they were doing here, so good role models and people that I can look forward to, to maybe help out too.
And you didn't know Ann, but she had an impact immediately on butterflies and Megadeth Park and other things like that, and the Colosseum, so things are rolling in that direction.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you much. Good to meet you. All right.[239.23][239.23](Applause). I think we've got Chief Chris -- no, Chief Ryerson is here. Thanks. I saw another Chief.
We're all here, Mayor.
There you go. Thanks. By the way, there is a red truck running parked in a police station space out here, just in case the enforcement officers are out here.
Sorry about that.[265.33][265.33](Laughter).
There are three still open spots. You're okay.
Good evening, Dave Ryerson, Marshalltown Fire Department. So, we are here to do a couple of things tonight. You know, the fire service is filled with traditions, and one of the traditions is whenever we bring a new employee on, or whenever there's a promotion, we have what's called a badging or a pinning, and that's what we're here to do tonight. So what I do is I'd like to start off, first of all, with introducing our new firefighter who started last Monday, and this is Christopher Case. And Chris comes to us from Austin, Minnesota. He's an Iowa boy, but he decided being back here was better than being in Minnesota.[306.87][306.87](Applause). So Chris, if I could get you -- Chief Cross, if I could get you to do his pinning for me, please.
Let's not draw any blood.
No. Why are you so nervous?
Just don't scream.
Boy, I hope he's better at fires.[351.03][351.03](Laughter).
I'd be going for the buttonhole myself right now. Oh, you got it? Good.
Congratulations.
Yeah, too much starch. That's good.
Congratulations.
Then the other thing we're here to do is, back in November, the Council gave me approval to refill the Fire Marshal's position. So I'd like to introduce our new Fire Marshal. This is Joshua Warnell. And approximately two, two and a half years ago, we started him down the path of getting all the training and the education that he would need in order to be able to fill that job. We did the promotional process in December, and Josh also started last Monday, so this is officially his second full week as Fire Marshal.
Congratulations and welcome.[399.03][399.03](Applause).
I want you to take your badge off and put it on officially. I got my hold on it, done. Under your top. (Laughter).
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to flip the order a little bit because we've got other people here for the next presentation, and so let's do that next presentation first, and then we'll go to Mayor, Consul, and Administrator comments. Chief, you're up.
Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department, and standing next to me is this young fellow, Randy Kessler, Officer Randy Kessler now. So I heard Jeff say he graduated from high school in 1989, so the last time that Jeff was living in his mom's house in his old bedroom, this young man was starting a law enforcement career 30 years ago. January 23, I think, was the day, right? 30 years ago. So today I looked up what was happening on this day 30 years ago, and it wasn't really anything good, other than Randy Kessler was starting in law enforcement. But George H.W. was our president, Phil Collins was singing some song that I don't remember, and the movies weren't really good either back then, but...
Just don't sing the song, Chief.
I won't. I promise. So, but Randy has been a dedicated member of the Marshalltown Police Department and City of Marshalltown government for a little over 30 years now. And it's been my great honor and pleasure to know Randy for only about seven of those, a little more than seven of those. And when Randy -- when I started, Randy was a detective, and he served in that role for a long time. He was a member of the ICAC Task Force, which deals with crimes against children and computer crimes. Randy has served in many roles in this department. I believe he was a K-9 officer for a few years. He's been a leader in the department. He's been a leader with our labor union, a friend to many, is well-known in the community, a hard worker, dedicated, a straight shooter, somebody that I can always have a honest conversation with and know that I'm going to get some honest feedback. And Randy doesn't mind if I give honest feedback back to him.
Nope.
He's a great guy, just a great guy, a great professional. He's also very involved in the community, serving in different roles with the Legion, tremendous community member, and really cares about Marshalltown, cares about this police department. And he's a special person, and we're very fortunate to have people like Randy serving as police officers in this community. So on behalf of the City of Marshalltown, I just want to say thank you, Randy, for 30 years of dedicated and outstanding service.
Thank you, Chief.
Congratulations.[604.82][604.82](Applause).
Thank you. It's been a very fast 30 years, and I can't forget Lieutenant Blyle told me that I should mention how much I like working with him, so...
Okay.[627.66][627.66](Laughter). You can pay him later, Blyle.
Hello.
Very good. Let's go on to the Mayor, Consul, and Administrator comments. Does anybody have any?
I just want to share some exciting news, at least from something I'm involved in outside of the City Council in town, is Softball Diamonds just announced last week that will be getting 2019 All-Star Home Run and 16-inch major national tournament here in Marshalltown. And then they've also already elected to have the 2020 USA 16-inch Men Major State Tournament here as well. So it's been a while since it's been here from Chicago. It's going to bring a pretty large crowd to Marshalltown over Labor Day weekend this summer, and it'll be kind of an exciting time as we recover from the tornado and see what opportunities ahead.
Absolutely. Thanks for sharing. Good news.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir. Ms. Martin.
Snowstorms bring a lot of work, a lot of misery for all of us. The fact that I'm sitting cattywampus tonight is with reason. Too much snow makes for sad boy and stiff boy. I would like to compliment our city workers on the monumental job that they've undertaken for a period of time, in fact. We're not done yet, apparently, but kudos to them, and big thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. My grandfather used to say, he was a doctor, medical doctor, Evan Spencer, said that the most stressful thing and the most dangerous thing for an elderly male was to shovel snow. And I think snow might have something to do with the absence of Mr. Gowdy tonight, too. So be careful out there. Was that a Hill Street Blues?
Is that an excuse?
This is for me. Okay. Any other Consul comments? Jessica, do you have any from the City Minister?
No, Your Honor.
Very good. Let's go on to the consent agenda, then.
Move to approve.
Second.
Very good. Do we need a roll call for that, really?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wehren?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, may Madam Secretary please read that.
Said special meeting for February 4 at noon regarding the budget, approve the January 13 council minutes in the bill list and $1,171,423.36. I think that should be the January 14 meeting, not the 13th.
I think it says 14th on the little jump sites blow.
Received the building report for December 2018, resolution approving 28E agreement for providing fire and confined space rescue services to the Iowa Veterans Home. Approve alcohol license renewals, Vons Pub, Jiffy Convenience Stores, Elwood Country Club, Golden Karen, Yes Way, Wandering Creek Golf Course, Fairway Stores, Food and Gas Smart, Dollar General Store, number 2019 and 4206, Depot Liquor and Grocery, Quick Star 706, and approve addition of Sunday sales to existing license for Abrote's Last Salute at 17 North First Street. And resolution to approve an agreement of the assignment and assumption and First Amendment to the offer to buy real estate and acceptance from Cohen Esri.
Very good. Thank you. Those are approved as read, and let's move on to Item G, which is resolutions, the first on which is Resolution 2018-202 authorizing sale of city-owned property at 22 North Center Street that was tabled, and I know it was put back on the agenda. I know we don't have a full complement of Consuls tonight, but if somebody has a motion to move that off the table, now would be the time.
I move to do that.
Second.
Roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wehren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, it's off the table, and on for discussion.
One of the items, I unfortunately didn't get it in time to include an updated memo in the packet. Your direction to me last time was to move forward with trying to get a fair market value of the building established. I did talk to a local commercial Realtor who recommended that, just due to what the type of the building was and what it had been used for, that I talked to an appraiser. He recommended Wobeter Appraisals out of TAMA, who said it would be at least $2,000, probably closer to $3,000, to have an appraisal conducted, but that as he did some initial looking, it would be hard to come up with comparable buildings. I didn't want to take on that expense without you knowing that that was what was proposed at this point to sort of get what that fair market value of the building was.
Thank you for that, and that isn't any surprise to me in my profession, but is there any further discussion about it?
Your Honor, I'm still interested in accepting Youth and Shelter Services' offer.
Thank you. Any other comments by the Consul?
I have talked with several constituents and have come away after speaking with them of, we have in place what we are working with a master plan that is going on and should be done by the middle of June, and several comments, and I've been swayed to this thinking that maybe we should slow down a little bit on a few of these items that we have, that have come before us. I know some of them have to for the different programs that they're applying for, but to make sure that we know what our plan is for downtown so that we can have a better feel for what it is we want to do and how we can make the best fits throughout the community.
Thank you. Other Consul comments?
This was a process of bidding, though, was it not? And that was the bid that we received, correct?
Yes, it was a request for proposal process that basically allowed anybody who wanted to submit a purchase price along with the proposed use of the building to you to consider.
Anyone else?
I would also echo, I mean, we reopen it for an RFP as well for a second time. So, I mean, I guess we can have the discussion to delay an additional RFP window, but it's been three, four months, and it's, we're currently, I guess, still at where we're at and to put everything on hold, I think, until summer, I think, is a little bit, I don't know. I would disagree with putting everything on hold until the summertime frame, and we're going to run into doing all our projects at once, and I don't think that's the greatest idea either.
I just have one comment, and that is, you know how I feel about it. With what we approved with the bricklayers on our new police and fire, we'll still be using that building in June, so don't think that we're, if they think they're going to move in it right away, it's going to be a long time before they get in there. And then we have to do all the disconnects first.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir. Ms. Martin?
We went through a bid process, I remember very well. We had how many bids?
We had, this was the only one that didn't have contingencies related to it.
We accepted it conditionally or unconditionally?
Correct.
We delayed it.
So we, it was the only one that was submitted by sort of that initial timeframe that was set, and then because it was the only one, that was what we set the resolution to basically set the public hearing off of. The section of Iowa code that we're using requires that you still have a time period within that 30-day period from saying, this is who we are likely to sell it to, to holding the public hearing, to then take those actions, that other bids could still be received. It was during that time period that the other bid was received.
I guess regardless of timeline, even as part of the discussion, do we want to spend $3,000 in order to find out what the market value is, just to find out that this might be the bid that we accept at the end of the day anyways? And so now we're accepting a bid regardless of dollar amount and losing money on it?
I agree with Councilman Isom.
Okay. Anyone else from the Consul? Otherwise, I'll open it to the public, to the public of deals.
Lee Bottor, 401 Orchard Drive. You've heard me speak multiple times on this issue, and it's not that there's an issue with the public, that YSS, they do an awesome job, an awesome job, but these are public assets, and we would like you to seriously consider, you know, going for market value. Okay. I like the idea of slowing down the process a little bit. I've heard that repeatedly with people I've talked to and in social media. The concern that I would have is, when you look at this, we do have appraisers that are local that may be less than the $2,000 to $3,000. That's something you could look at. The other piece is, are you setting the precedence? When you sell the police department for $35, what are you going to sell the fire department for? That's a good question. Please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor and members of the Consul, my name is Pat Kramer. I live at 205 Harmony Drive. I'm the current Board Chair of the Community Advisory Board at YSS. I spent most of my work life with the Marshalltown Community School District, and as I interacted with my colleagues around the state in the school business, one of the things that people most envied about Marshalltown was how we worked together in this community to get things done. It's incredible how the schools, the city, the business community, and social service agencies in our community work together as one to get things done, and we have attracted many grants and other resources into our community and really made our community a good place to live. That's served us well since July 19, this kind of collaborative and cooperative working together. In some communities, it might be a surprise that the city would entrust a community resource, like our current police department, to a nonprofit, but I don't think that's true in Marshalltown. We see that as a community resource, and you all know the difference that YSS has made over the last 35 years in our community and will continue to make. We're not going anywhere. If you find that this is not right for YSS, we're going to find another way. We'll probably have a capital campaign and raise money in the community and build a building or find another building to serve our needs. We don't want to do that. We'd rather use our resources to serve young people. We, YSS, I think you know, provides support to young people and to families in some of their most difficult times in their life. To young people that don't have safe places to live, to foster children, to young people that are leaving foster care but still need support, to families who are going through crisis and need counseling. We can assure you that if you entrust us with this building, we will be good stewards, and we will invest in that building and make it a better place. And we'll also be open to other community agencies that share a similar mission to ours to come on in and share the space and share the expenses that'll be involved in keeping that building up and operating. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Time for a roll call.
I'm not having a motion yet.
Well, I'm sorry.
I move for approval, Your Honor, to sell to YSS.
Is there a second?
I'll have a second.
I may get this in another year or two. Now time for roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemer?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Wehren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carried. Good. I don't get a vote, but I get to comment every once in a while, and I happened to be invited over to Ames, Iowa in December, when this local YSS got the top, one of the top awards in the state for the services they provide. I can't think of a better neighbor to us, so thank you. Let's go on to Resolution Number Two, please. Madam Clerk?
Resolution authorizing an agreement with Aid Bailey to continue to provide audit services for fiscal years ending June 30, 2019 and 2020.
Let me ask for a motion first this time, so I don't forget.
Second.
All right, go for it.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. I am coming before you to ask to extend the auditor's contract for two more years. The last time it was put out for proposal was for fiscal years 2013 and 2015 audit. At that time, an agreement was approved with Aid Bailey. I had come to you three years ago and asked if you would extend the contract again because we were implementing new software, and you granted me that. Now I'm asking you to extend it for another two years because of the tornado costs of tracking and our FEMA compliance, and it's a lot of extra work. So you can see from the memo that, I guess I could open it, that it's a reasonable increase, and so in fiscal year 20's budget, we would be increasing another $1,400 and $1,500 in fiscal year 21.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I've got one. Do you anticipate if we bid it out that others would come in and have to be higher because of the inability of knowing what had happened in the past and the difficulty in knowing how to handle the destruction of the tornado?
It could be difficult to write the specs with FEMA, not knowing how many hours it would take, and them not being familiar with our accounting software.
Anybody else? Public comment? Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wehren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Carrie, very good. Thanks, Diana. Would you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution approving the fiscal year 2018 annual financial report.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
Second, Your Honor.
Go for it.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So last November, we brought you the annual report that was on the cash basis, which means when we write a check, that's the year we spend, expensed it in. Now I'm bringing you the comprehensive annual financial report, which is under the accrual basis. So if we actually received product in the door by June 30, but we didn't pay it till after July 1, we are expensing it in that year. Same thing for the revenues. If we provided services prior to July 1, we're picking that up. The CAFER also includes depreciation expenses and retirement liabilities and other accrual items. So I'm happy to report that Aid Bailey then came in and audited this report, and we received an unmodified, clean opinion, which means the report is presented fairly in all material respects. The compliance sections also outline our findings, and I'm happy to report there were no findings related to the financial statements and no question cost. There was only one statutory reporting recommendation related to the TIF certification, and we took care of that this past November when we submitted the TIF report, so it should not be in the audit comment for next year. I sent this out to you last week so you could review it. I don't know if anyone has any questions. I'm happy to answer.
Any questions or comments?
Nice job.
Good report.
Yeah, thank you.
I move that we extend your contract another, like, 50 years.
Exactly. You really have been doing a nice job, truly. You really have been doing a nice job, truly. Thank you.
I do need approval on this.
Yep.
All right. Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Carried. Good report. Next resolution, please.
Resolution approving contracts for property acquisition, permanent and temporary easement acquisition, and payment of landscape damages for the High Street Drainage Improvements Project.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. As the city clerk just read, this is for approval of two easements for the High Street Drainage Project. This would be for Jim Clark's property on the south side of High Street, opposite the storage facility, and then for the Springer property, which would then be south of Jim's property on the northern boundary of South Street. We did need, when we started planning, we did need temporary construction easements along Fourth Street as well. With planning with Bolton and Mink, we did go through the process and get write of entries from those people in exchange for a new sidewalk and a new driveway approaches rather than going through the process of getting temporary construction easements. So we did need acquisition to other people's property. We just didn't go through the process of a temporary construction easement. Are there any questions I can answer?
I can't imagine a public comment on this one. Any council comments, questions?
Is this on the east side or west side of Fourth Street?
When it goes down Fourth Street between South and Engle Do, it will be on the east side, basically right between, kind of right underneath the sidewalk.
Roll call, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Carried. Thanks, Justin. Next resolution, please.
Resolution ordering construction of the High Street Drainage Project, setting public hearing on proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs, and directing publication of those to bidders.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Your Honor. Second.
Justin?
Again, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. This is our first official action in getting bids and getting a project rolling. As we just discussed, this is for High Street between, or sorry, the High Street Drainage Project, leading from the pond on the northern side of High Street to the intersection of Fourth Street and Engle Do. Can I answer any questions on this resolution?
Seeing nobody raising a hand, let's do roll call.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Carried. Next resolution, please.
Resolution approving contracts for property acquisition, payment and temporary easement acquisition, and payment of landscape damages for the 2017 manhole and point repair project.
I don't think you have to tell us your title again, Justin. Go for it.
In an echo of the last project, this would be approving property acquisition from about 13 properties for the manhole and point repair, which, to refresh the council, is to continue on our consent decree path, replacing manholes, replacing lamp holes, replacing hand holes multiple locations throughout the city, I want to say on the order of 100 to 150. And Fox Engineering helped us get an acquisition agent to acquire these 13 tracks. Any questions I can answer for this project?
Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we had.
I move for approval.
Down to my knees again.
Second.
Now we've got the motion and second. Let's call the roll.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Very good. Covered. Thank you. Carried. I mean, number eight, please.
Resolution ordering construction of the manhole and point repair project.
Oh, number seven. Yep, sorry.
Sounding like a broken record. Once again, first step in our process to get bids and get a project underway for the manhole and point repair project.
Is anybody moved to approve?
So move.
Second.
Anything else?
How many, what's the dollar number? No.
Steve, can you refresh me? 2.3? 3.5 million dollars?
Cash or bond?
I'd be using the state revolving funds.
Oh, okay.
So it'd be a loan, low interest loan.
Any other questions, Justin?
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Carried. Thank you. Next resolution, please.
Resolution ordering construction of the High Street Drainage Project, setting public hearing on proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs, and directing publication of those to bidders.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Your Honor. Second.
Justin?
Again, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. This is our first official action in getting bids and getting a project rolling. As we just discussed, this is for High Street between, or sorry, the High Street Drainage Project, leading from the pond on the northern side of High Street to the intersection of Fourth Street and Engle Do. Can I answer any questions on this resolution?
Seeing nobody raising a hand, let's do roll call.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Carried. Next resolution, please.
Resolution approving contracts for property acquisition, payment and temporary easement acquisition, and payment of landscape damages for the 2017 manhole and point repair project.
I don't think you have to tell us your title again, Justin. Go for it.
In an echo of the last project, this would be approving property acquisition from about 13 properties for the manhole and point repair, which, to refresh the council, is to continue on our consent decree path, replacing manholes, replacing lamp holes, replacing hand holes multiple locations throughout the city, I want to say on the order of 100 to 150. And Fox Engineering helped us get an acquisition agent to acquire these 13 tracks. Any questions I can answer for this project?
Seeing none, let's call the roll.
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we had.
I move for approval.
Down to my knees again.
Second.
Now we've got the motion and second. Let's call the roll.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Carried. Thank you. Next resolution, please.
Resolution approving contracts for property acquisition, payment and temporary easement acquisition, and payment of landscape damages for the 2017 manhole and point repair project.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Anything else?
How many, what's the dollar number? No.
Steve, can you refresh me? 2.3? 3.5 million dollars?
Million. Cash or bond?
I'd be using the state revolving funds.
Oh, okay.
So it'd be a loan, low interest loan.
Any other questions, Justin?
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Carried. Thank you. Next resolution.
Resolution approving an agreement for professional services with Clapsettle Garber Associates in the amount of $151,500.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Go for it, Justin.
This would be a resolution to approve engineering services agreement with Clapsettle and Garber for our, we're calling it a shared use path along 12th Avenue. It's been a project Counselor Hoops wanted to see happen for a long time. This would put a wider-than-our-necessary sidewalk, but maybe not full trail width path along the east right-of-way of 12th Avenue from South Street to Olive, and then from Olive to the entrance of the Governor Road Plant. Trying to think of what street that would be, maybe 1,000 feet to the south, and then extending the trail along Olive Street from 12th Avenue over to 17th Avenue, and then constructing a five-foot sidewalk north on 17th Avenue to the northern extent of that cul-de-sac. We were planning to design this in-house, but with the lack of staff, we didn't feel we could get this done in the timely manner this year. So we did seek Clapsettle and Garber's help for this. Can I answer any questions on this project?
Ms. Martin?
Yeah, Justin, this project has been with Counselor Hoop out there for some time. The necessity is for safety and access. I'm wondering if something simple can be done on the intersection there of making a bike path marked off, walk path, whatever, that is designated.
And you're talking about Olive and Governor Road?
Olive and Governor Road, but also coming to the south with South Ridge.
Going across.
Something there to either, to mark it. I think it only would take paint on that part of it.
Yes.
It's long been a concern of the southeast side neighborhood for some time because it's used as a walkway, day and night, and a lot of traffic goes past that. So this is a big improvement, long needed. So I applaud this effort.
It's out fairly close to the soccer complex. Two kids that might want to get out there.
Yes, it would be.
I know Mr. Lamer and I are still pretty proud of what happened on West Olive Street when we were going to just have it the same narrow lane, and now we have that extension. And it's fun to watch people with buggies and walkers and bikes on that.
Right. We owe this one to Mr. Hoop.
We do.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
This was previously all designed and easements were all obtained. It was ready to go, kind of?
No, sir. It was mostly designed, I would say, a preliminary design. If we've given you the impression or said in the past that we obtained the easements, that was incorrect. No easements were obtained on this project.
We talked about it, but we never did it.
Yes.
It stopped. When we saw what it looked like, it was going to be a big, big deal. So my question is, can we do it in the way it would be designed? Could we then piece it out over a few years if we wanted to? Because that's a lot of...
We certainly could.
Probably a huge budget.
Yes.
Nope. He's saying nope.
Spent 10 years already.
I'd ask.
It's possible.
I mean, if it's $150,000 to design it, it's a multimillion-dollar project. That's a lot of money.
We, just as a reminder, we did borrow, I want to say $900,000 for this in the project or in our calendar year 2018 borrowing. One of the things that you would have the option to do is if this does go over, once it's put out to bid and everything, that we could allocate some dollars from other parts of that bond to make sure this is finished, or talk about what other sources might be available. But I don't think we're talking probably too far over our budget, but likely over budget from where we were on the borrowing side.
Are there council comments or questions?
There wasn't any easement spot?
None were executed, to my knowledge.
Were they laid out?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all done.
We will revisit that, considering it's a decade old. I would tell you right now that I imagine it's going to actually require. That was one of the problems. Yeah, is my understanding is we probably were trying to shoehorn it into too small a space.
Okay.
Yeah. Clapsettle, and I've had, I'll say, fairly extensive conversations already about what, if any, cost-saving measures do we need to go through, what kind of utility impacts and easement impacts are we going to be looking into? Yes. It will be challenging.
I think Mr. Hoop would go along with this, is since we're going that far, make sure we go to the front end of the driveway that goes into the soccer diamond. So if the kids want to walk down there, walk in, they can.
The path will actually be on the north side. The soccer diamond would be on the south side.
I know. But at least take it far enough east so it matches up with the driveway.
We will definitely review that.
Long as we're doing it.
I'm not going to argue now.
Any other council comments or questions? Public comment or questions? Roll call.
Hoop?
Thanks, Justin.
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Carried. Very good. Thank you. On to item H on our agenda, which is discussion items, the first one of which is to discontinue the waiving of residential building permit and demolition permit fees.
Yes, we wanted to just bring you up to speed with where we were at on how much had actually been issued and waived and what that looked like. We have just hit the six-month mark where many permits have been taken out. There's likely still some demolition to be done. We do see that quite a bit of it could be what we've submitted with our FEMA project. And so our request and recommendation in front of you right now is that we do come forward with the resolution at the next meeting to officially put an end to the stop of the waiving of the residential building permit fees and then demo permit fees for all. The one thing that is noted in here, and I think it's a very important thing, is that siding, window replacement, roof repair, and fence construction, and deck repair do not require a building permit. So a lot of the work that you do see happening, that is, that exterior work, is not something that actually requires a building permit. And so a lot of what's yet to be done on homes is in that category of not even requiring a permit.
Any council discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Martin?
I recommend putting it as an action item on the next agenda.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that, or can we just?
It'd be nice to have a motion.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion by the council? By the public? Roll call.
got some numbers to throw out before you here tonight, which, which basically get us there. Our insurance replacement costs, and I say this is, this is the minimum, this is not necessarily the maximum, is 1.5 million. We do have the, the, basically what was estimated for replacement as part of that number, and so we will be reviewing that to make sure that there wasn't something that was missed. Specific concerns that I've had, if, if you've been in, is there is some, some of the plaster that's damaged in that front entryway area, and we just want to make sure that everything was covered. For the most part, there's not much else that does exist. All plaster has been removed in just about every other area, as well as anything that had any sort of water damage. Our insurance policy also allows for $250,000 of ordinance or law coverage, which basically means code upgrades. So if the elevator, that is to be installed on the west side, I don't know if I can pull up a picture, if the elevator shaft alone in that whole area doesn't cost $250,000, this, this right here, we would be looking at the cost of sprinkling that front area helping to get us to the full 250. So undoubtedly, we have $250,000 worth of the renovation that would get us to, to that point. That gets us into other areas. I've just put in a number here for city funds on hand, and again, this is not a decision you have to make at this point, this is just a number for you to be aware of. We currently have $350,000 in cash on hand that was from the downtown area, and it was taken in as, as tax increment financing. So it can only be spent in the downtown area for something that is approved within our urban renewal plan, of which this project is there. So everything is in place mechanic-wise to, to allow for that to happen if you would choose to designate those funds. We're also looking at, there could be some proceeds remaining from the demolition of the senior citizens building that could help make up that number as well. That was something that I think we kind of had a very loose conversation about, that if there was money left over from that project, that it could be designated here. And then I've, I've thrown in the figure of $300,000 or more of council-designated local option sales tax, which we'll go over the overview of what we have there in terms of balances during the budget presentation, but there would be money there that you could designate as well. Obviously, those numbers all total more than 450, so you do have some options, but I just wanted you to be aware of that, what was behind tho, that $450,000. We do believe that there are at least a million dollars worth of grants that we can be applying for, with some very big ones coming up here soon. The Wellmark Large Grant is up to $100,000 and due in late February. We think that this might be an ideal project for a Prairie Meadows Legacy Grant, which is 100,000 to 1 million dollars. We don't believe that it, this is worth a $1 million ask, but we think that it is a, a six-figure ask. The Martha Ellen Ty Foundation is due on March 1st, as well as the Rebuild Marshall Town Fund due on March 1st. So we've got four big grants that could get us very close to that million-dollar mark coming up here in the near future. We, we then sort of are left with, after, Alliant has already, due to work that had been done with the potential HVAC systems and how that would work, Alliant has already said that there is a $48,200 rebate that would be likely, so I built that in. And then looking at a, a gap then of about $350,000 in donations and fundraising. That's a number that I can tell you right now, I feel comfortable with it. I think we really need to do some work to put together a, a really comprehensive fundraising plan to make sure that we can hit that mark. So that's kind of the big picture, and like I said, you know, there's, there's some big opportunities for grants coming up here that we certainly don't want to miss in this go around if, if you're ready to have us start putting the financial resources in place.
Any comments or questions?
I have two.
Yes, sir.
I have two comments. First, first comment is the, is, is I understand the downtown TIF, I would like to see that TIF money go to a tax-paying entity rather than us use it for ourselves. That's just personal because that way we get it back. And the $300,000 designation, the, the one down below, the, the Rebuild Marshall Town Fund, I was hoping we could use that for businesses and residents rather than us, but it doesn't make any difference to me. That's just my personal feeling is we, we, we probably could find some cash somewhere else so we can leave that open to private industry and, and residents and businesses and stuff. If we're going to, we're going to be rebuilding this town for a number of years, and I would like to keep that money for that rather than us use it and we find another way to get our money. That's personal, that's it.
I can tell you that the Rebuild Marshall Town Fund is only available for nonprofits and government entities in the impacted area. I believe that there is an application coming out March 1st.
Why?
That's, that's the way it's been designated through the community foundation.
Yeah, but did, did the people that put the money in there know that? Because I understood, I understood from the Lennox contribution that was for anybody.
So there's, there's multiple funds there. There was the larger community fund, and then that has been turned over to the, has been or will be turned over to the Long-Term Recovery Committee, and then the Rebuild Marshall Town Fund was for rebuilding. Because it's through the community foundation, they, they don't grant to private entities. And so that's, that's, I think, where things are coming in that would be different from it going to the other fund, which was meant to support the, the private, you know, individuals throughout this, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, as soon as we do get some more information about sort of the grant guidelines and things, I'll, I'll definitely forward those out to you.
Other questions or comments?
Comment here. I express my enthusiasm for this overall project, and I know it's anticipated and there's a lot of work going into it. I'm in favor of, of a resolution of support for the project. However, I echo Mr. Lamer's concern about the use of TIF funds. I think we've got to avoid that and make that the very lowest priority for use. In fact, I'd, I'd like not to upfront. So timeliness of the grant proposals is at hand. It's important that we move ahead.
I agree with the support for the project. I think that it is an expansion for our community, and it will draw additional folks coming into our community to take a look at what we have, to sponsor their events there. I think it gives us more flexibility in what we do with the, the building, makes it much more appealing and handicap accessible. So I, I do give my support for the project.
Thank you. Other comment?
You need a motion? I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Further discussion, any public comment?
Support, support the, how would we want to word that?
It's a resolution of support for the project.
Just support the project.
If there's no further council comment, I'll call for a public comment. Seeing nobody standing up, let's take the roll.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Carrie, I wish you'd just parked that picture up there and keep it.
That will probably be part of our fundraising, is getting that picture out there so people understand exactly that it'll look very much the same, but be much more accessible.
Sure. Item number three under discussion is the budget for year 2020, and below that, general fund and local option sales tax documents. Diana Steiner again.
Hello, Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So the departments got together in December and met with the city administrator and myself and developed their budgets. I put an index together for you so you can kind of see what the different functions are and what we kind of run through there. Gave you a history of what we actually spent in fiscal year 17, what we actually spent in 18. The next column was our year-to-date through December, which would be six months for this fiscal year. The next column is the reestimate, reestimating of the fiscal year 19 budget. And then the fifth column is a proposed FY20 budget. And then you can see the difference in percentage and increase in dollars. So our budget was put together based on the following assumptions. The negotiated step increases and cost of living adjustments of 2.75% for all nontemporary employees. This is what the union employees get, and so this is what we also gave the non-union, nontemporary employees. We budgeted a health insurance increase of 7% for the last half of fiscal year 20. We always determine in November whether it needs to be increased or not. We've held our current rate at, over the last three years, but we did have an increase this past January of 7%, so we're predicting another 7% for FY20. We will not implement this increase unless our claims history necessitates it. We budgeted all vacant positions for 12 months. There was no change in the IPR's contribution this year. There was a decrease in the municipal fire and police retirement. The road use tax is again being used to transfer to the general fund to cover wages of the Public Services Department, Public Works Department. The levy and related expenses for the Fisher Community Center is budgeted at $100,000, as we discussed at the last meeting. In this budget, there's no reimbursement of expenses budgeted for the operating expenses of the new police and fire building. We just touched on this last time, but do you want to continue that discussion? Have you thought more about it? Whether we should collect revenue and how much? So would you like to discuss it at this time before moving on?
Anyone?
You mean, are we, are we talking about the NIA 2080 agreement?
Yeah, so, so basically, the, the bigger picture here is, and maybe we would do want to save this to the end, the bigger picture is that when you do look at where things come out in terms of revenues versus expenditures on page 41 of, 44 of that larger report, we're showing $125,000 surplus. That's based on a $150,000 transfer. If we keep that, if, even if we don't keep all of that $150,000 transfer, we don't have a need this year, this next fiscal year, fiscal year 20, to ask the Communications Commission to contribute towards any of the operating expenses. However, one of the things that I do want to take you back to was what we talked about in strategic planning, which is what actions can we take in this next year that will help us be as financially stable as possible, possible come July 1st, 2020? And so that's where I think it is an option that, you know, they're past kind of their budget deadlines and things for, for this next fiscal year, that if we talk about this first year, as we're going through a learning history with it, that that not be included as anything to be reimbursed, but then for the fiscal year that would start July 1st of 2020, that that is when there, there would be a reimbursement requested. And so that's, that's really what we're, what we think is the easiest to recommend at this point, to hopefully buy some goodwill in terms of not messing with their budget process, but still not our, not put ourselves in a position where we're in a, a little bit more of a financial hole come July 1st of 2020 with, with no easy way out.
Okay. I, after the last meeting, I had conversations with a lot of the people on that board, and, and I've had emails between Jessica and I, and we've had conversations about this, and I think we kind of caught them off guard because they'd already done their budget. And my, after talking to them, we already had made a commitment. The mayor sits on that board, and the mayor had committed that we wouldn't charge him anything but a dollar for that first year. So I, I think we have to stand behind our mayor this year, first year, but I think we can, in my conversations with the, with the sheriff, we talked about them proceeding with the process of making, taking those two commissions and making them into just one, so that we only have one to deal with rather than two. And he's pretty sure that the state law will allow that to happen. And so I, the 2080 agreement that we had last time, I'd like to have it put on the next council agenda, so we can, we can vote on that as long as it's for one year, and as long as they know that we're going to be looking at some real costs and, and we'll, we'll, we won't, we won't send them a letter and say it's going to cost you this much. We'll sit down with them across the table and we'll work out the, the details. So I'm, I guess that's my recommendation.
I think that, I think that I can tell you about four commissions, I can't keep track of which is which. Mine was one of about 22 votes, I think there are about that many mayors around, but that, it's, it's, nobody has to back me up on the vote, to be honest.
Yes, they do. You, you made a commitment, we're going to back it.
Your Honor? I agree with Councilman Lamer. I too have had some conversation on this, and I think that's a reliable and sure way forward to proceed. So I'd like to see it on the next agenda as well.
Anybody else on that one? I do think it will help us get back in better graces with the other towns in this county.
I agree as well.
Is that a motion, Mr. Lamer?
You bet.
Second.
Further discussion, public comment? Roll call. Let me know if I'm going too fast.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop? Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Very good. We've got direction to staff on that one.
So continuing on, the city continues to reimburse the mileage at the state rate, which is 39 cents a mile. The backfill from the state is budgeted at 94%. The general fund's share is 255,000, and our entire backfill is 435,000. We're hoping to continue to get that. The general fund property tax levy is shown in function 6021, which is Finances Department, on page 34. So we put all the property tax revenues in basically my department, so I can keep track of them, rather than allocate them between all the different departments. On page 41, it shows the revenue in excess of expenses in the FY20 budget of $125,000. This surplus is primarily due to the 150,000 transfer from the local option sales tax that was discussed with council at a prior meeting. We only will transfer if it is needed, but would like to show a positive budget rather than a negative budget. So that brings us to a positive balance. I put $50,000 budgeted to bring up our cash flow reserve to a minimum of 15%. I can back that back out if you would like. If you recall, our goal is to have 20% per our cash management policy, and I gave you the different amounts that it would be. So if you're interested, maybe we could not only have the 15%, but maybe creep up to 16% if that's your desire. Again, it's just money for cash flow purposes. It does not give anybody the authority to spend it. The pool activity in function 4045, starting on page 27, reflects the change in the management of the aquatic center from the YMCA to the city employees. By being open more consistently and having more control over the staff, the city anticipates doing better than the budgets reflect. So we're being very conservative, not knowing for sure how it will play out over the summer for one season. So we're hoping that it will be more positive than what the budget is showing. From a prior meeting, the council approved tracking the Coliseum expenses in Fund 001 rather than 050, so you will see that activity in function 4065 now. In HR's budget, we did put $10,000 in for a lien to help streamline processes. So before going on, does anybody have any question about FY20's budget? Any of the detail for the different departments? They're all here, ready to answer questions. Okay, I'm going. So for fiscal year 19, when we're doing our reestimated budget, you had passed that we moved $478,000 from the solid waste management assessment into Fund 355, which is the Dangerous and Dilapidated Building Program. So when I did that, then that puts me in a negative position of $137,000, which is fine, we can leave it that way. This is not an official budget amendment, like we normally have done in the past in, in this time of year. There's so many things, so many variables yet to figure out and move money back and forth between FEMA and regular general fund expenses. We'll have a better idea of what we'll actually get reimbursed later in the year, so we're going to do the official budget amendment in May, but for now, we do have to just do a reestimated budget. So if you're okay with that, we'll leave it at the deficit.
Any objections?
I'm still kind of disappointed we didn't, you know, put Jeff on the hot spot about the parking rec, budget.
So we'll go on and talk about local option sales.
I think you ought to explain it line by line, wouldn't you?
Exactly. Oh, hell, I'm sorry.
So go ahead, look, I will go over the local option sales tax. So this first column is the property tax relief, which is now 78% of what we collect in local option sales tax comes into the revenue, and then the council-designated is the 22%. So the top line is where we ended, the end of fiscal year 18, then you have your revenues and your different expenses that you approved. The only question, well, the only tentative item, is this construction manager long-term recovery committee position. It may not come forward, but we left the $50,000 in there. Jessica, do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, the, the long-term recovery committee is still trying to figure out where things go next and where things go really after the city completes the Valor Program, and so there hasn't been anything that's been fully determined on that end, but that's where that's still out there as a pledge of support moving forward, which it, it would be something that would be probably in a contract form with some organization that probably would come back to you for your approval.
So in fiscal year 20, I did reduce interest a little bit since our fund balance is coming down. And then this transfer in for the stormwater, we're just showing the revenue, and then down here, we're showing the expenses. So we're taking our $2.4 million that we would allocate from our local option sales tax, and that goes right to property tax relief. So that buys down our debt service, which I showed you last time. We're also recommending that we use the fund balance left, what we think is going to be left at the end of fiscal year 19, which is around $390,000, to also buy down the levy this year. And then under council-designated, again, transfer the 150,000 to the general fund. Our ADA transition plan, you had approved that, and it's over two-year period, so you have the 60,000 here, and it's also up here. And then 50,000 for the cash flow reserve, if that is what you would like to do. And then the capitals, you saw this in our CIP plan. So some options again for your cash flow reserve, if you want to increase the amount from 15% up to 16 would be another 151,000. And you can see the other numbers, if you wanted at a higher percentage. And then as the last agenda item on the Coliseum, you could also use local option sales tax for the Coliseum renovation as well. So are you okay with keeping the 50,000 in there for the cash flow reserve? Or would you like a different amount?
Any reaction?
I'm fine, let the.
Yeah, I am too.
I would. I would, with the following year, we don't know where we're going to be for taxes and our property tax income. Maybe we wouldn't want to spend that $392,000 against lowering taxes this time around and keep that as a, as a, as a fund balance, just in case we need something to help cover us up if we don't get everything.
Yeah, you hit on what is going to be the issue that we have to overcome, which is a lot of our levies are based on your actual amounts that you need, and the pie that you're trying to spread that all over is going to get a little bit smaller. We did want to show you what that looks like, that it's a, you know, that $390,000 does save a 44 cent levy increase, and so this could be sort of a gradual step year, fiscal year '20 a gradual step year, knowing that then the next year would be, I would, I would just guess we'd probably easily be over $16 for a tax levy at that point, just with the loss and basically all costs staying the same. So Diana, is my math correct, that if we don't use the $390,000 this year, we'd be at $15.95?
Yep, I'm pretty close, yep.
So that's, it's there for you to think about. That is something that we do need direction on because it does impact our tax levy, and we need to get that sort of nailed down.
We're at 15, what's our current? 15? Point two eight.
Point two eight.
Fifteen two eight. And it'd go to fifteen?
Fifteen, either 1544 or 1595. Or 15, 1551 or 1595.
What are you two most comfortable with?
I'm comfortable with using the $390,000 to buy down to $15.51 as the levy. I'd rather save the council designated. The 390 has to go to property tax relief, you can't use it for other things.
Yeah, and I'm on the same with Diana. One of the other things that we've talked about is, you know, going back through and looking at the fund balances of some of our other funds-related tax levies to see where in the future those could be bought down. Our health insurance one is one that, you know, we, it funds a lot of things, and so there's variation from year to year, but there's some possibilities there, but that we're not encouraging you to do anything more than the $390,000 buy down in this fiscal year.
Anybody have a different idea?
I can certainly bring back next time the different scenarios.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Are you up for next?
That's all.
Number two?
What, I think though, the one other thing that we just, probably to be able to button up the general fund pretty quickly is, are you wanting to transfer in more local option sales tax than is needed to come out with a zero balance, or are you wanting to just have things at a zero balance?
That's related to the $150,000 that we're transferring.
Zero balance is fine.
Anybody object to the zero balance idea?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then our last public comment is about the budget SIP and capital expenditure purchases.
Yes, so we did an initial review of this here at our last meeting, and there's been just a few very minor changes here that have occurred. Fund 030, which is our capital improvement tax levy, I did get some more refined cost on the Anson Park improvements, and I increased this from $120,000 to $180,000. This will, this project will still require grant funds and things to make it happen, or we, you know, have some things sort of on an à la carte menu where we can't do them now. In order to make that happen, I had to bump two projects. In order to make that happen within the 15% boundaries for our fund balance, I had to bump two other park projects to fiscal year 2023, which was Peterson Park Playground Equipment, which was just playground equipment. It wasn't tied to any of the larger improvements to be made at that park as well, and so there was really sort of no plan for it in fiscal year 2022. And then also the volleyball courts at Riverview Park, that was going to be something that was ultimately going to be something to be determined by the new Parks and Rec Director as to whether or not we needed to complete that project, or if there was another way to go about using those courts. The wayfinding signage has also been moved from Fund 110 to Fund 030 with some sporadic $25,000 amounts there to help again with the implementation of the study. The first and proposed here in fiscal year '19 would be the replacement of the monument on Iowa Avenue and South Center Street. That would then coincide with the Highway 14 project as well. So that's, that's not been designed, it's not been determined, but that would at least establish a budget there for us to bring something back to you to consider funding. And that was the change to road use tax fund, was that wayfinding was moved out. The Coliseum renovation fund was updated with the figures that we talked about earlier tonight, which was slightly different. The downtown TIF construction fund had some errors with it in terms of not showing a transfer coming in from the TIF revenue fund and the beginning balance issue, so those were corrected. And then the final thing that was a correction was that fiscal year '23 in the wastewater revenue fund had zero revenue, which it needed to have revenue coming in, so that number has been added in. There are still likely a few changes that would be captured in Fund 030 in the current fiscal year. One is that our ICAP insurance proceeds related to vehicles. We have everything there except for, the police department has been very good about, we took the insurance payout, and they're finding cheaper ways to get work done. So there's some money that we have sitting in the tornado fund where it really shouldn't stay there, it should be transferred into the capital fund to help support the vehicle purchases of the police department. And then one other thing related to 030 that Diana noted was, I did not include any backfill revenue for fiscal year '20, which we would make that adjustment and make sure that revenue is captured there for the next budget year. I think it was about $18,000, but it doesn't change things drastically to begin adding more projects or things. So that's where we are right now. At this point, we would not intend to be bringing anything forward to you further on the capital improvement plan, so if there's any changes, we'd certainly like to know about them now.
Any changes proposed? I'll bet the public does not appreciate the incredible amount of work that goes into this from every single department and the staff, in addition to which they're handling all the tornado disaster recovery stuff. It's just been really yeoman's duties that these guys have been doing, so my hat is off to all of you. But truly, if anybody has any input now, let's talk about it. If you have it later, do that. If nobody on the council has any input, I invite it, I'd invite the public to comment. Seeing nobody standing, let's proceed on to public comment. And now I have to read the same thing, which is similar, but not quite the same. Uh-oh, here comes that three-minute meter. Members of the public may make comments on any item which was not on the agenda during this time. The speaker shall oppose the microphone and state name and address. Comments limited to three minutes unless longer comment is authorized by me, who hasn't eaten dinner yet. The speaker shall direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole, and we may, the mayor and councilor should not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on items raised in the public comments to comply with the open meetings law. Chief, that was recognized.
Good evening. I might need a little more than three minutes. I'll do my best. So we've had a very busy week with the police department, and I would be remiss if I failed to publicly thank a lot of people, and I'm not going to be able to hit them all tonight, and we're going to do our best in the coming days to make sure we thank everybody properly. But first of all, the women and men serving in the Marshawn Police Department, rock stars, amazing people, despite their police chief, they get the job done and meet every challenge, and I'm so very proud of the work that they do. Lot of long hours this week, and they've done an exceptional job. And I also have to thank my peer departments. Every one of our city departments were somehow involved in the activities of the last week. They all stepped up big time, and I sincerely appreciate their service to our community and the partnerships that we have together in addressing problems. Great people, superstars working in all these departments as well. And I need to thank the Marshalltown, Marshall County community for stepping up to support not just public safety, but the Brown family, Sheriff Hoffman, Kim Elder at Emergency Management, Marshall County CERT, lots of folks locally. Every fire department and EMS department in this county was somehow involved, a lot of state agencies involved, and we even had a visit from the FBI, and lots of people helping out to try to help the Brown family. And to the Brown family, I just want to say our thoughts and prayers are with you, and we're sorry for what you're dealing with. It's horrible. So now, I need your help, and I need the community's help. When bad things happen, people tend to want to assign blame. They want to know why bad things happen. Somebody must be at fault, right? I've learned over 26 years of service that sometimes bad things happen, and there is no blame. And there's unfortunately some brave souls in the social media world that don't always think before they post, and there's some very unkind and less than compassionate things being said about what happened. And it's all speculation. We've been very guarded and reserved in what we have said about this case. It's all speculation. Tragedy does happen, unfortunately, it can happen to any of us. And to, at this early stage, to be trying to assign blame to anybody is reprehensible. Please, I hope that people in the community think about the Brown family and what they're going through before they speculate about what happened, what didn't happen. And I need, I need the leaders in this room to help us pass that message, that maybe we need to be careful about what we say and what we don't say. Lots of parents and grandparents in this room. I don't know how many times, raising five children in my own, in age range 22 to two, how many ti, I mean, my older kids, their cell phones spent more time in my back pocket than in their hand, a lot of times. We don't know why Cory left the house. We hope to find out. But to speculate at this stage and try to assign blame is just not fair to anybody. I just, I know the community's going to support, support the Browns, and I want to say the local media's been great, by the way. I've spent most of my day-to-day battling the national media and some of the tabloid journalism that's out there and some of the things that are being said, again, trying to assign blame, and the Brown family sees these things, and it's not right. So I have no reason to believe that there was anything that happened here beyond a tragedy, and it's nobody's fault. It's not Cory's fault, it's not the Brown family's fault. Sometimes bad things happen. And I would just remind everybody to go home tonight and hug their families and thank God that they still have their children in their homes, or their grandchildren in their homes to hug. So I'm sorry I went over time, but I would appreciate everybody's help in passing that message. Thank you.
You could go another 20 minutes on that topic, Chief. We had that exact same discussion last night at dinner, my wife and I, because I've been seeing some of those posts and thought how idiotic that people don't think what kind of impact that will have on people. So glad to have that comment. Thank you.
Sarah Rosenbloom, Library Director. I just want to remind everybody, I know we know it's terrible weather, and while the library is an essential service, we are having some hour changes, so I really want families, and especially if you're coming to the library, please, please check our hours. We don't want any children left outside the building. We closed at 6:00 today. Right now, we're planning to close at 6:00 tomorrow, Tuesday, and possibly Wednesday. Also, Wednesday, I believe, it's going to be the worst day, so I just urge everybody, please check our Facebook page, call the library if you don't speak to somebody, just double-check. We just really don't want anybody coming out in this very scary, bad weather or getting caught, so please, we just urge you to check the library's hours. Things may change, we certainly post them, we appreciate the radio stations. I just don't want anybody to get caught off-guard with this really bad weather, and we're working with the city. They're doing a fabulous job, Public Works and Parks, on keeping the library grounds open, but again, we, you know, we need to kind of adjust our schedule if, you know, certainly there's priorities and what needs to get plowed, and then also sidewalks. We don't want anybody slipping or falling, so I just urge you to think about the hours and don't just assume right now while we're in this terrible weather.
You know, when the schools are closed, it kind of amazes me that the city places like the library can stay open. Chief, I don't envy your task of having to announce news like you have to do in your job, and you did a remarkable job of keeping all of us abreast on what was going on behind the scenes, so I applaud you for that and wanted to say that. Somebody dropped off this I had not seen before to each of us up here. It's the Marshawn Lifestyle Chamber of Commerce booklet. It's incredible. This is really nice. It showcases Marshalltown very well. It's another thing that CVB and the chamber have been able to put together. Any other public comment? I've been talking too much tonight. Let's adjourn at 6:57 PM. Good night.